All right, it is 3:01 on December the first of 2020. I'm going to call to order this work session for the Ingraham School Board. On Zoom, I have Board Members Marsette and Member Bellamy in the boardroom. I have myself, Elisa Vikalis, and Member Alicia Hildy, as well as the superintendent. And we have a short but important agenda today. The first item up is the strategic plan and the goals and guardrails follow-up. As most people know, we have had this out for public comment, and we've been taking it out to broader parts of the community, doing a little mini presentations. Just wanted to have an opportunity to get together as a group and talk about what we are hearing from folks, if there are any course corrections or anything that we want to talk in terms of going maybe in a different direction, adding or removing, just what are we hearing from the community? The hope is that this will be on the non-action tonight. It'll be an action item on the 15th. And so this really is our time to take as much of our feedback and have the discussion as a group and see what happens and where it goes. At this time, I do want to surprisingly hand this over to Board Member Marsette, who is the Chair of our Strategic Plan Ad-Hoc Committee. She has been really guiding and spearheading this. So I'd like to just hand it over to her for any comments and direction on the conversation.
Thank you, President Vikalis. Yes, our first town hall meeting was very successful. I think we had 80 maybe online with us, maybe more than that, but approximately 80. We were able to answer a lot of questions. I think what we mostly heard was support, but wondering, you know, where the finances and how we'll be providing that support for our board goals and guardrails. And of course, that will be forthcoming when we approve these and we turn them over to Dr. Bishop and her staff to bring forward the objectives and how we are to accomplish these boards' goals and guardrails. Our next town hall is on the night from 6:00 to 7:00. I know that Ms. Bellamy and I, and I think Mitchell, will be attending a Black Caucus meeting to share with those folks and get feedback from them. And I know there's been others going on, so I haven't heard any differently. I do believe that in general, from what I've heard from our last town hall meeting and from others, that they are in support. Just waiting to see, you know, how we're going to do that. But I think that what we did is we followed very closely what the community offered to us back when we were asking for what their priorities were, what their values were. I think we did a good job as a board and putting those forward and doing so, I believe, has led us to where we are today, and that is putting forth goals and guardrails that the public value. So that would be my input. I'm sure other board members may have something to add.
So just a friendly reminder to board members to use the little blue hands in Zoom so I can see the order that people are coming in. That'd be super helpful. Next up, I have Member Bellamy.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. So just a correction, Member Marsette, the members Hildy and Vikalis will be joining you on Sunday along with the superintendent for that conversation. At least, I think that's what I saw on the flyer. And so I've met with all of my community councils, including the Federation. So, and I only have five community councils, and I met with four of them actually. And the feedback was very positive among the community councils. I also met with the AEA Board to discuss the goals and guardrails. And they had some input, which I encouraged everyone, whether they gave me input or not, to please put the, go to the website and put their thoughts in the feedback tool that we have on the website. And then just in general conversation, I've also, I've been speaking with people, you know, in my sphere. And again, it's very, very positive. There are questions about whether we can add, not goals, the goals are pretty solid. The guardrails is where I'm getting more questions from. And so, and I've asked those people, those individuals and groups to put those questions in the tool as well. And so the areas of where people have asked about in the guardrails have to do with the term equity. And I mean, the whole, all of our goals and guardrails are based, steeped in equity. It's, and so I think it's just a matter of us explaining, you know, that the work is based in the framework of equity. It is not, you know, necessary, at least in my opinion, that the word equity appear there. So there should be comments about that. The other had to do with something to do with content areas and as well as the whole child. And I just think that, you know, to remind people that the process started a year ago and that the goal, and that what we have now is based on that input and for them to continue to give us feedback through the website as it's set up for right now. So that's basically what the feedback that I have to share.
Thank you. For the record, wanted to say that Board Member Mitchell has joined us on Zoom as well. And Member Hildy, you had some comments.
Oh, I was just saying, the feedback from community councils, I mean, everybody has been very supportive of the reading one. You know, math one, they're seem okay on, and everybody likes the CTE and being prepared for life. And so just general support. I would say I don't get a lot of engagement on this particular issue, given how serious other things are right now. So that's a challenge for us that I think we just need to be aware of, that it's really hard for people to kind of talk about this right now when we have, it's super important. You know, I think it's super important, but just putting that piece in our discussions.
Thank you. So just Member Mitchell, we're talking about our strategic plan, kind of what we're hearing in the community, sharing any of the maybe thoughts or concerns that people might have had or just kind of catching each other up as a board. I think that's one of the things that I've heard is, even though I know we've talked about it in the public arena, the difference between our reading goal being 80% and our math goal being, you know, I believe it's the 55%, and just the not understanding, once you explain it, I think they understand. But that seems to be a common question that does come up. And part of, I think, funding of some of these things. And then having to explain, we have our goals in the interim. And so those are just kind of the directions I find myself repeating and kind of going through and just explaining to folks, but generally a very positive feedback and sentiment from the public that I'm hearing. Did any other board members or even Dr. Bishop, you know, want to weigh in on where we're at? Just as the reminder that, you know, from here, we still have the second town hall meeting, the opportunity until the 10th to get more feedback from the community. And hopefully, you know, look forward to passing these on the 15th so that we can really move forward as a district. And, you know, when it comes to doing our budget and wrapping it around adopted, you know, goals and guardrails, that'd be awesome. I don't know whose hand came up first, but I'll start with Member Mitchell.
Yeah, thank you. So I have been talking about it to my community councils in very broad terms. I've listed the three goals and people, as Member Hildy was just saying, people really like the CTE goal in particular. They like the focus. I have not gone through the guardrails specifically. For some reason, I was still back on the schedule that we had when we kind of resumed this process a couple of months ago. And Member Marsette had presented the schedule. I thought we were collecting feedback for some reason through January. So I had offered to my community councils that we could spend a little bit more time in December. You know, if they wanted to give me maybe 10 minutes or so on the agenda, that I could go through it with them in more detail. So given that that is not the case, that we are trying to vote on this by December 15th, and I don't, I don't know how I missed that, I will be encouraging them to use the survey as member. Bellamy has been saying to the survey to provide input. I think people feel like the surveys are, you know, not quite as, I think they like having discussions about these things and feeling like that comes back. But the surveys obviously are an opportunity for them to provide very specific comments. So I think that that is a benefit of that. So I'll be, you know, like I said, encouraging them to have their members look at the survey and respond that way. So, but overall, they really are liking the college and career-ready goal in particular.
Thank you, Member Marsette.
So just at our next town hall, I mean, really, that's a good time to have a discussion if they want to ask questions online or if they want to submit questions. A lot of those questions could get answered right there. We can also start out that next session kind of explaining the feedback that we received from the community versus reading and math and kind of explain that a little bit, because that does seem to be a question that comes up regularly. The other thing that I would ask is, at this time, and I think this is a good time to discuss it, are there any board members that would want to change, modify, or delete any of the guardrails or goals since this is a work session?
Member Mitchell?
Well, I do, you know, I sat in on the AEA discussion. And I do, I do agree that the, I mean, obviously, career and college-ready speaks to a lot of different types of skills that our students have. But I do think that it's important, it is possible that people will look at our three goals and feel that they are very, very narrow and that the purpose of an education is not just to teach specific skills, but also to teach about citizenship and what it means to be a, you know, a member of society and how to, and I know these are things that educators obviously know and it's important to them. But if we're not explicit about, you know, we still need to be able to teach love of lifetime, lifetime love of learning and critical thinking skills and all of those types of things. You know, I don't know if that would be another goal or if that would be in the form of a guardrail. But I, when they brought that up, it did make me just, you know, gave me pause to think for a moment and consider that we have very, very narrow goals, which is great because that makes them smart goals, you know, it makes them very focused. And the more focused we can be, the more likely we are to achieve those goals. And that was a big discussion around the reading goal. So I guess I would just like to hear other members' thoughts around that particular issue. I wouldn't want to lose that. And I know it's in our values as a, it's, I mean, our vision, our mission statement is not changing. But the goals and guardrails obviously are pretty darn key.
Member Hildy?
I mean, I agree with everything Member Mitchell pointed out. I think, can you, I don't want to get too close. Is it, it seemed like too close last night. Okay, I agree with what Member Mitchell was saying. I think when I think of goals, like we have our mission, right? We're going to educate students for success in life. That encompasses all of those things that Member Mitchell mentioned. And then the board is saying, here are the three things we're going to focus on, like really watch to make sure we make some improvement in these areas, which like for me, music's always important, right? So we see that in the, you know, the career one, right? That's one of the, one of the options, you know, for meeting that third, that third goal is, you know, having access to extracurriculars or something like that. So there is some awareness of you have to have those programs be successful for students to be hitting those targets. But like, I'll have people say, what, don't you care about graduation rates now? Those things are always going to be, nothing stops. It's just that what are we going to focus on so that we, if we actually, and I absolutely believe we could, but let's say like within three years, we get to 80% reading K through first, third grade, like the whole world opens up, right? Like now, we can do the next big thing and the next big thing. So that's, you know, it's just a focus, but doesn't negate any of the other cool things happening.
Member Marsette?
Yes, so I would agree with Ms. Mitchell also. But I also want to point out that, you know, we went out to the community and we heard very strongly the values of our community, our students and our parents. And that was those, that career, college, and life-ready. And I guess I have to think or believe that, you know, in our classrooms, our teachers are teaching critical thinking skills in their curriculum and their presentations of curriculum, that those are all instilled in the academics in our schools. You know, and I have to believe that our teachers are so great that they do that without even thinking about it. I think they do that and instill those critical thinking skills in their curriculum. So it's not that, I can't say that any one thing is less important than others, but we have to put a focus on something and I have to value what the community and our students just spoke out about so strongly. And it was about that financial literacy. It was about college and career-ready. So I really feel comfortable with what we have.
Member Bellamy?
Thank you. So, you know, I just think that the work that we have put into identifying these goals was significant. And I think that we collected, and I know that the timing is all kind of off because of COVID. If not for COVID, we would have had these adopted in March. I am always interested in hearing from the community in what they want to, on anything we do or we are planning to do. But this, this process, I mean, we have governed ourselves according to a process that we entered into to do, to have three goals and four guardrails. I'm not saying that we can't change those, but I would not be in favor of changing them simply because what we have, the data that we collected from our community identified these three guardrails. And the seven of us as a board identified, I mean, the four, the three goals, and the seven of us identified the guardrails. We can put all kinds of stuff in a guardrail. I just don't, I just think we need to, I would like to see us move forward, develop the interim goals under each guardrail, under each goal, and move forward. Nothing is going to stop in this district. We're not going to stop working on graduation rates. We're not going to stop incorporating our, you know, all of the content that our children, that we know children need to be successful. We're not going to stop concentrating on the whole child. We're not going to do that. But we, but these goals for the next five years, these are the goals where we are going to put our expertise and our resources. And, and I think part of hearing from the community helps us decide how we can incorporate, you know, into our interim guardrails or in our interim goals, how might we incorporate some, some other things or further develop things? But I won't be in favor of changing. I just think that, and it is a difficult time, and people are total, totally inundated with all kinds of just living. And I just think for us to, we have to listen and we have to look to see, where can we incorporate some of this without altering our path? That's, that's just my general feeling.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop.
Thank you, Madam President. And really, my comments are in line with Member Marsette and Member Bellamy's. I wanted to share if there is a fear, if you will, of something, you know, such as science and social studies going away, I want to alleviate that because it's actually built into the program. It's in state graduation requirements as well as ASD graduation requirements. And in order to build capacity and knowledge around those subject areas, they need to start early. So what we learn in 10th grade science is built upon year after year after year. And so in support of those prior comments, the work is already there. It's in other forms. What these goals and guardrails say is just elevating to meet those smart goals because it's evident that we aren't. So we have to focus and apply our skill and knowledge and resources to really build capacity in those areas. But it doesn't mean that others go away. And as far as graduation rates, it would be very difficult. I cannot see a child being college, career, and work-ready without graduating. So it's actually embedded in those outcomes that the child needs to demonstrate. So I think we're squared away on both ends and just wanted to share that, that there's other documentation and policy and statute that holds those others accountable.
Member Marsette?
I just wanted to finish up with a reminder about our website that some board members did a wonderful video on our goals. Thank you, board members, to go up there and take a look at. And it has all of our goals, our interim, it has everything out there. So I encourage the public to go out there and take a look at that. And then there's a place there if they have any questions. So I just wanted to remind everybody that they are welcome to visit our website.
Member Bellamy?
Yes, I would just like to ask a question probably for the superintendent and chairperson Marsette. At the next town hall, is it possible to speak to the, how the, people are seeing our goals and our guardrails as separate from, somehow separate from the overall mission of the Ingraham School District? So I don't know how, and I think, and I'm not sure how to, I guess my question is, is there a way for us to clarify that, much like what the superintendent just said, that we are not, we are not setting something to the side in order to do while we're prioritizing our goals so that we can do a better job? We are not, we are, we do have the whole child in our, we do embrace the whole child. We do embrace those things that are, that people are somehow seeing as left out or separate. I don't even know if that makes sense, but if you're right in our presentation to maybe clarify that, that, that we are, this is a holistic approach. It's not while we've prioritized our, our work, we have not isolated or diminished anything.
And, Madam President, if I could just respond to that.
Yes.
I can certainly include that in my introduction, Margot. Just something very briefly, letting them know that, you know, we, we still rely on our mission. Our mission is for the whole child. But as we do every five years, we do put forth our goals and guardrails so that we can focus on what the community believes is important and their values. But that doesn't detour from our mission as a district.
Okay.
Member Mitchell?
Yeah, I just appreciate that comment from Margot and Star. I think if we can include that in the presentation, that would help people to, you know, see the whole. So I really appreciate that.
All right, well, I'm not seeing any other hands up in the queue. As Member Marsette has talked about, we have the next town hall, I believe it's next Wednesday. And we've gotten some good feedback on some things to include with it. And we will all, as board members, continue to go out and keep reaching out to our community and, you know, help spread the word, you know, as best we can. So at this time, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the pro forma. And so at this time, I will turn it over to our CFO, Jim Anderson, and Andy.
Okay, hopefully, everybody can see the slides on the screen. I will assume yes. So Andy and I will be giving the annual pro forma brief over the next 20-plus minutes. And I think all of the board members are aware that, basically, we take everything we did this year minus metrics-based adjustments for enrollment projections next year and show a year-over-year comparison if relatively nothing would change. So let me go.
Jim, I just wanted to throw in there, I hope you don't mind, Madam President, but this, I reviewed this, and you guys did a wonderful job putting this PowerPoint together. And it's very self-explanatory, and I'm looking forward to the presentation. But I just wanted to tell you what a great job you guys did in putting this together. Thank you.
You're very welcomed. So everyone knows the purpose. We do this every year. It's, it's not the basis for how we build the budget, but it does provide the board a mind's eye view of what it's going to look like for a projected deficit as we go into the month of January. And we'll be talking about this again at the next Finance Committee meeting and certainly at the next board meeting for any final guidance that the board would like to give us. At this point, we're continuing with the guidance we received a couple of weeks ago, which is go with the guardrails and the goals that the board is in development right now. And that's the, that's the path we're currently taking. Andy, would you like to start with the State Foundation Formula?
Certainly. So this all should be a familiar slide to you guys. It really just shows how the foundation formula goes from the ADM in the Oasis count in October to the adjusted ADM that's used to distribute state aid. New to ASD this year would be the Hold Harmless Provision that's in statute. It's being triggered for FY '21 due to the decrease in enrollment from FY '20. The school size adjustment, and it's really based on this first school size adjusted ADM number. And it's triggered when one year for FY '21 goes more than 5% below the FY '20 school size adjusted number. Looking at FY '22, if you're still below your FY '20 school size adjusted number, then by any amount, you can take 50% of the difference between FY '20 and FY '22. So you'll see that, that Hold Harmless Provision being taken as we go through there. And it will add quite a bit of money back to us, but it's still, we'll still have a reduction there. For FY '23, that gets reduced to 25%, and then it's phased out completely in FY '24. Also, one thing to note is since we can't, since we claim this Hold Harmless Adjustment, we can't claim the one that we're receiving for Mount Spur closure any longer. So that, that Hold Harmless goes away, which isn't really a big deal. We really weren't expecting to receive hardly any adjustments for that. So this is the adjusted average daily membership as calculated, just like the slide before, but it's compared to the adopted budget and the preliminary Oasis count for FY '21. The salient points I would note with the ADM change, we're projecting about 1,178 fewer students for regular ADM from the adopted FY '21 budget, although it's projected to be an increase over what the preliminary Oasis count is this year. On the same token, our correspondence students are going up by about 1,264 projected. So that kind of, that flows through the formula. That's predominantly in the charter schools, so that money flows through to the charter schools. A little bit lower here, you can see the Hold Harmless Provision at 696. That's where it gets added back from the difference between FY '20 and FY '22 at 50%. And then the other point to make on here would be the 66 fewer intensive need students that we expect to have, which is pretty much in line with where we're at in FY '20. Our total enrollment and revenue, this is the rest of the calculation after the adjusted ADM is established. The rest of the formula is applied to establish state and local funding. You know, I think the biggest thing to note on this one would be the increase in the required local contribution down here from 108 or 107.8 million to 112 million. That's entirely due to the property values from calendar year 19 increasing to calendar year 20 to 42.4 billion. It's about 4% increase. The issue that comes up with this, though, is going to be, we're going to be at the local tax cap for the municipality. So we may not be able to collect enough money to fully fund the student transportation as we have in the past couple of years. But really, that's, you know, as that goes, the required local contribution goes up. The state money goes down by a dollar-for-dollar amount. So really, it's putting the more of the burden on local taxpayers and less of the burden on the state to fund education. Next slide is our general fund revenue. As you can see, the local property taxes, about 4.1 million, will be the net increase in local property taxes, or about a little under 2%. And the corresponding decrease in the state foundation formula, about 5.7%, which is really the net of the ADM adjustments and the shifting of of state support over to local. And then, of course, we don't use any fund balance in our pro forma. In typical years, we'd usually know we will have some fund balance to put towards that. Although this year, you know, we're still going through all our projections for, for this year. Hopefully, we can present that in a few weeks. But, you know, really, not really optimistic that we'll have a lot of fund balance to put towards the deficit in this year. The other thing I would note on our general fund enrollment, it's very similar, or on the federal impact aid, it's very similar to FY21's impact aid. And the way that impact aid is calculated is generally they take the, what would be the student counts for FY21, and then that would be the basis for the FY22 federal impact aid revenue. There was a bill that's gone through Congress called, I believe it's the federal, let's see my notes here, a federal impact aid coronavirus relief bill that allows us to use FY20 student counts to fund FY22. So that will be quite a bit, big difference, as we did have a fairly sizable decrease of students on base. We expect that to be about $3 million more than what we would have gotten otherwise. It would have been around the, you know, $13 million range had we had to use the FY21 counts. So happy about that. But overall, we anticipate losing about $10.5 million of revenue as opposed to our FY21 adopted budget. Our expenditures, those are based on our staffing levels adjusted for enrollment. So as our enrollment goes down in our neighborhood programs, our staffing requirements, based on our current metrics, would also go down. And then we adjust those for what our contractual obligations are. And this, in this version of the pro forma, we did add back the CARES Act and COVID costs that we're, that we did pay for out of FY21, FY20 dollars in the CARES money, predominantly the health teachers, IT one-to-one costs, and then some virtual software that we'll talk about below. The other thing we have with salaries, wages, and benefits are expected to track, or wages, benefits, and other salary items are expected to track what our inflationary increases are there. It is important to note, though, we have six contracts that haven't been settled yet. And as those take shape, you know, we really don't know. We expect that to be another five and, between five and 10 million of cost escalation that's not included in that pro forma. So you'll see that a little bit later on as well, and we'll just, you know, keep coming back to that point. Because it's really important to note that, once these contracts start getting settled, our deficit will change. As far as our supplies, services, and equipment, we're expecting a little bit of a decrease in electric. And right now, our heating costs are trending higher based on usage. But we'll continue to evaluate that and may need to update that as having kids in the buildings could, could affect how much heat or natural gas is used. The other one that is going to increase is our telecom and bandwidth costs. As we have contracts for distance learning with GCI to provide home internet for the low-income students, those, those contracts will continue into FY22 and as part of the one-to-one initiative. Aside from that, the instructional software is about 2.7 million or so that we, we had in virtual learning software. Those will be, we'll, we'll go through those as, and see what's going to be necessary for next year to keep the program going. Or if it, and see what the need is for that. And then the student allotments with the correspondence students getting the correspondence ADM growing, so does the amount we need to pay out to families for those allotments. So you'll see, as we talk about the deficit, that those costs are, are going up fairly rapidly, too. So and that's just the money following the students. And then liability insurance, that's generally due to sexual, nationwide trends and sexual abuse allegations, traumatic brain injury. And now we've layered on potential COVID-related liability costs on there. They're estimating about a 10% increase, 10-20% increase. We've used 10% for the purposes of this, but as we get closer to having a finalized budget, we will be with our insurance brokers and see if we can get that cost pinned down a little bit better. This is our, our current projections for the general fund FTE by state function. This is purely based on bringing folks in from the CARES Act and the metrics-based changes with respect to regular ADM, correspondence ADM, and special education. So you'll see these numbers changed a little bit. Overall, it's down about seven FTE from FY21. Okay, this shelf slide shows the salary inflation by state function. You know, as I mentioned, we have AEA, APA, ACE, Totem, BUS, and Food, all unsettled for FY22. So the amounts that you see in here, these percentage increases are largely due to step increases that are built in the contracts that the district has, really no intention of freezing at this point. So they are built into this estimate. But the COVID increases or other contractual increases are not in here. But we do estimate, you know, like I said, around five to 10 million. And then at the bottom here, we have the, the cost of the staff added from the CARES Act and the reduction in staff based on metrics. Next slide, so this is our preliminary budget gap. It's about $25 million, not including the unsettled contracts. And you can see the contracted services, that's the increase in, most of the increase in the student allotments and the software. And then some increase for utilities. The increases in supplies, that's largely due to the one-to-one initiative as well, as we're going to need to replace, renew some Chromebooks as older ones age out. And then you can see the insurance as well. And it's just one particular layer of insurance. It's our general liability insurance, not necessarily our, our property. So it's, you know, some of it's higher, some of it's lower. But that's, that's really kind of where we're at on the general fund, about 25.3 million or so. Our people transportation fund, you know, we looked at our state funding, and then this is where the local tax cap comes into play in our, then just our normal expenditures, which really aren't out of, out of alignment with what we'd expect in any given year. So next slide, we'll be able to see the revenue and expenditures and the deficit in our fund, in our transportation fund. Based on the municipal tax cap, we think we'll be able to collect about 2.7 million in property taxes, which is about 1.4 million less than we did in FY21. We do not include any sort of fund balance usage in this again. We will update you guys on the, the projections for transportation to see if we have any fund balance available for use in there. The state transportation revenue is expected to go down as that's tied to residential schools. So as they've gone down, so does the state transportation revenue. And correspondence students don't get transported, so they're not included in the state's revenue formula. The rest of it, salaries, benefits, all expected to attract historical inflation or what about we'd expect on the contracts. Settled contracts on here probably won't affect this deficit too much. But we are expecting about a $2.8 million deficit in the end for transportation, bringing the total deficit for transportation and general fund to about 28 million.
Thanks, Andy. So the next slide just shows a general snapshot of the cost of FTE along the bottom, because about 90%, just under, of all of our expenses are personnel. So as we go into January and we develop the proposed budget, that's kind of how you can, how you can see the numbers of FTE we have district-wide. And if you look at maintenance and below, ACE, there's quite a few that, that doesn't work directly in the schools, although they're certainly in direct support of schools. And charter admin is principals and business officers. And noon duty, the majority of our personnel are either directly supporting or working in a school building. And that's, that's kind of how we approach when we look at, at meeting a balanced budget. And naturally, by statute, I think all the board members are aware, we're required to have a balanced budget. And that's what we'll work toward during the month of January and February. Are there any questions at this time?
Member Hildy?
Thank you. I had two questions. One, if you could just spend a little time talking about the tax cap and the implications from reduced state funding. That's a big question I got before the pandemic. When we go to community councils, people would say, well, why can't I just give more taxes? So just to make sure I understand the changes happening and the 1.4 million less in property taxes that we'll be collecting, like the cause of that. And then also, just I had a question about staffing. Like, I thought we had higher staffing this year because you couldn't, we had reduced enrollment, but you would have laid off for those lower numbers in May, but then you didn't lay off people, which I'm glad. But they would have in May, but we missed that deadline. So how would that look this year for reduced enrollment? But the first one is just talking about the tax cap and just making sure, understand the cause and effect of that.
Right. So for the tax cap, the foundation formula has a required local minimum that Anchorage has to provide and then a max. So because the property value increased, it increased the required local minimum. That went up by 4 million, which reduced 4 million from the state as designed. And then it ends up really just being a tax cap within Anchorage municipality above the, that, that kind of, where now our max local contribution is running up against the, the tax cap within Anchorage.
Right. And I would add that the local, the additional local contribution is capped by the state. So in the general fund, we are going to collect all the money from the, or we expect to collect the local tax money up to the state cap. The state allows us to collect additional tax revenue for special revenue funds like transportation or food service. But our municipal tax cap limits the amount that we can collect with that. And since we're collecting so much more on that required local contribution, now we're pushed up against the municipal tax cap. So we can't collect as much on the special revenue funds for transportation than we, that we otherwise would be able to.
And in regard to the staffing, the adjustments that were noted by Jim and Andy in regard to the reductions by metrics are specifically related to the decreased enrollment. So they accounted for that. Or it would have been more of a, if we would have left them in, it would have been more than $25 million. So they, if you could go to the slide, I'm not sure who's controlling these, that demonstrates the differences and the adjustments made by, basically, the new enrollment. They make metrics-based adjustments. That is the reduction in staff according to metrics. Is that correct, Jim?
This shows the, the general fund FTE by state function. What you see in the difference between 2021 on the top, over on the right-hand corner, and 2022, that decrement is based on lower projected enrollment across the district for next year. So you'll see that, that instruction dropped from 2303 to 2299. That was purely as a result of metric space reductions. You'll see that also for school administration and several others. What this slide does not denote is a forecast of what positions we actually would reduce in order to get a balanced budget. That process is the development of the budget and not simply projecting our budgetary gap as we roll into January.
So I have to ask, Jim, are these also according to where the student was placed? Because we're 4,000 students less this year than last, so the dis take into account.
It doesn't, it doesn't take into account this year. What it takes into account is our projected enrollment for next year, which is what we build the budget around. And all the metrics will be templated around the projected enrollment for next year.
Right. And the comparison is the budgeted amount, the original budgeted amount in 2021, pre-COVID, versus what we project in FY22.
Thank you, thank you. And so additional adjustments perhaps might need to be made in the metrics to meet a balanced budget. Would that be a correct statement?
That's a correct statement. As we look at almost 90% of our expenses going towards personnel, we're certainly going to have to relook the metrics across the district as we go into January and February.
Thank you. Next up in the queue, I have member Marsette.
So I actually have six questions. So I'll ask one, okay, two, okay. So what is in our fund balance now? And are, are we looking, I mean, I saw that 8,000, is that's what we're projected to come out of the fund balance at this time to support the budget?
Through the board president, what you saw was the 8.33 million that we had put in this year's budget that was approved in February and March last year that was forecasted for use during this year. We, we have not historically assumed that we would use fund balance for the development of pro forma. However, it's always looked at in January. If you look at our projected fund balance right now, we'll clean it up and brief it at the next finance meeting. But it's hovering around 8%, potentially slightly below. But right now, about 8%. But, but we would, we have not in the past assumed we would use fund balance. That, that discussion occurs in the months of January and February.
Okay. And then we'd have to vote on reducing that, correct, the less than 8%? Okay, so my next question is, how are you calculating the return of students? Because that seems like a large, I mean, you're counting on, what, about 4,000, 3,000-some students to come back? I mean, what, what are you using as a metric to calculate that?
We, we met with the charter school principals, the correspondence charter school principals, and, and we discussed potentially how they saw the number of students coming back. And I think everyone believes there's, there's going to be a significant number that went from a neighborhood school to a homeschool program that will return back to a neighborhood school when schools are open. We probably weren't maybe clear enough. We assumed as part of the pro forma that district-wide, all schools will be reopened next fall. When we talked further and you looked at and you looked at a particular correspondent school that thought about 30 plus percent would go back to neighborhood schools, they actually believed that, that by and large, they had so many people on the waiting list that ended up going to IDEA, Raven, Cyberlinks and others. That they may, even though some of our, our students in those programs come back to a neighborhood school, that they're doing, the programs are doing well, their reputation is sound. And they believe that they're going to be able to pull more students from those other statewide correspondence programs back into their schools. So it's, it's a balancing act. You know, I suspect that, that as, as, as we reopen schools as quickly as we can and we start seeing the number of students that already start transitioning back. There'll be surveys next, next semester as well to try to, to get a cleaner, a cleaner estimate and projection and, and it's potential that, that we would do a revised budget at some point based off what the legislature does during the session as well as any changes in membership projections.
Thank you.
Next up in the queue, member Mitchell.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson, can you go back to the table or Mr. Ratliff that showed the staffing? So kind of to piggyback on member Marseth's question, it looks like there's not a lot of change in staffing and in some cases from 2020 to 2022, the numbers are increasing. So it sounds like you're kind of assuming status quo in terms of the number of students right now. What is under, without having the index right in front of me, what is category 350 support services instruction? Cause it looks like that is going up. Whereas everything else was kind of staying the same or, or going up this, I was just curious what that category is.
Through the president, function 350 is a, a lot of it, the actual increase in here is going to be the IT personnel that's associated with the one-to-one staffing that's in the CARES Act currently. So that's what the increase, but I believe it also incorporates librarians, professional development staff, and then the elementary and secondary education supervision. As far like the directors and their staff.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I also wanted to acknowledge for the record, and I'm a little tardy on this, somewhere around 3:30 that member Donley did join us on Zoom. So next up in the queue is member Marseth.
Actually Bellamy's before me.
Okay, Ms. Margot, you can go.
I just have a question on this slide. So are there any positions, does this slide represent any positions that COVID may have directed us or, or influenced us to hire?
Yes, it does. It includes the 17, I believe, point seven FTE for IT. It also includes the health teachers that we use CARES Act funds for. And maybe one or two other FTE, but nothing else large.
Okay. So we're, we're, the health teachers would be in for, so the health teachers will be in 2022, or I thought we just approved them for one year in 2021.
That is correct.
But it just moves over because we were closed?
For the purposes of pro forma, when we wanted to show, does the district look the same way next year as it looked this year? We were just painting the picture that if all else stayed the same, with the exception of metrics based adjustments, that's what it would look like.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And, and the school support is again, the, the IT support that went, that member Mitchell pointed out that the significant amount was the IT to help support the different schools and teachers and carrying out online learning through Canvas. All right. Now, Ms. Member Marseth.
Yeah. I just want to make sure everybody had an opportunity before I start asking the rest of my questions. So how sure are we on the impact aid? You know, more cares, that sort of thing, because we're putting a lot of weight on receiving those funds. And I know there's some things in Congress now that are just at a standstill. Are we, are we 98% confident? I mean, how confident can we be?
We're about 99% confident on the impact aid because the state's already asking districts if they want to resubmit to go ahead and prepare the packet for submittal. I don't believe it's been signed yet, but it passed by such a large majority. I, I haven't seen anything that would suggest that the impact aid change, which really was administrative in nature would, would be overturned. In terms of the second round, or technically the fourth round of federal stimulus, but the second for us, we did not include any of those funds in the pro forma, although they certainly will if approved between now and January, potentially have an impact on how we build the budget.
Right. And then the other question I have is I know with bond debt reimbursement, that's, you know, of course not happening. And I know that the municipality has to pay that, but is there any way that they can, you know, we get so much money from the local taxes. Is there any way that they can take that out of our local taxes that, what we receive?
Well, the, the assembly certainly has the authority to determine anything above the required local minimum and they always have had that authority. But the, the bond debt reimbursement, that's not, that isn't applied toward the tax cap. That's separate and outside of the municipal tax cap. But if your question is, could the assembly choose not to support Anchorage School District at the max possible capacity, they've always had the ability to not support the district just historically. Anchorage is one of very few districts that has continued to receive maximum support.
Right. And if I can just ask one last question and then I'm done, I think. If I'm looking at this, so right now you're saying we're roughly about 28 million in the hole, right? Deficit?
If everything were to look the same next year, roughly 28 million. And it does not include the settled contracts that naturally six of them, as Andy had pointed out, that haven't been settled yet.
So if that went from 10 to 15, the most we could be looking at, and I cringe when I say this, is 43 million.
I, I think the most we're looking at is about 38 million.
Okay.
Because it's five to 10 million, depending on the percentages for the new contracts.
I thought you said 10 to 15, but I was wrong.
Plus 28.
Okay. Yeah. That's still a lot. All right. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. And I would like to be clear that the, it's 25 in operations. And then to keep our busing services, the way we would go, we would not have enough due to the lower enrollment of students and keeping our same buses. So just because students left, doesn't mean they, we would have to revamp our busing, like routes and things like that. So we just left those the same, but 3 million of that 28 is due to the transportation fund not supporting the transportation plan and routes right now. So that's given, that, that would have to take a look too. So just to, to, to keep our minds separate that that would need to be made up somewhere. And prior to this year, we've always gone back to the city and have been able to get that paid as a separate fund. But because we're up against a tax cap, we can't. So there's lots of different levers being pulled here, but in operations alone, just with state and local aid for operations, it's 25, approximately 25 million. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Right. Yeah, I understood that.
Next up in the queue, member Mitchell.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson, I, I think it's page 11, the general fund preliminary budget gap. And I haven't had a chance to really go through this a lot, but if we could go to that page. Okay. So I'm just curious, there's two items here that have gone up that are projected to go up quite a bit. And I'm curious, I'm assuming supplies is maybe because of technology supplies, refrigeration, Chromebooks. I'm wondering what the eight and a half million in contracted services, what that increase is.
Yeah, that's mostly about 5.3 million of that or so is going to be the student allotments that are increasing due to the correspondence accounts going up. And it may not all be in contracted service. It'll be, some of it'll be in supplies and capital, but that's, we just stuck it all in one place that we can't discuss it. So it's about 5.3 million there. And then the other big chunk is the 2.7 million in virtuals or the SD virtual software packages that we had purchased to do online learning. So those are, that's really the bulk of it in the contracted services. And then, yeah, as you, as you said, the supplies, it is the Chromebook purchase that we expect to make to keep up with our one-to-one.
Gotcha. Okay.
Member Mitchell, to clarify that, FY22 or FY21 costs for contract services that extra for the allotments. We didn't have that in the original FY21 budget. That was a result of these correspondence programs growing significantly this fall and being able to sustain a pretty large number of students for next year.
So actually those are changes in this year's budget when you, when you.
That's, that's correct. If you look at it as a huge growth from right now to next year, that would, that wouldn't be accurate. But if you look at what we thought we would have been spending and what we'll actually spend, then of course there's growth because the correspondence programs grew by, you know, close to 2,000 students.
Yeah. Thank you for correcting that. I just realized that, that was a misinterpretation on my part. So we would expect a lot of that 5.3 million student allotment that went to correspondence, we would expect a lot of that to come back down as those students move back to their neighborhood schools, assuming.
Actually, what we, what we are projecting is that the correspondence programs aren't going to shrink dramatically because both of our two large programs, Family and Frontier, feel pretty confident that they're going to be able to, although they may lose students that go back to neighborhood schools, they're also going to be able to pull non-ASD students who are at some of the other statewide correspondence programs and be able to sustain, you know, the, the losses by and large.
Okay, thank you.
Next up in the queue, member Hildy.
Thank you. So just going back to the tax cap. So if, so the question I get is, okay, I gave this much on my tax, you know, statement. You know, let's say three grand to your schools. How do I, how do we say, like for a community council, how much of that goes to the school district? You know, the mill rates don't mean a lot to a lot of people. Like, is it 90% of what's collected in property taxes ends up getting to the schools or?
I'm going to have to get with Lance and Wilbur and Alex to be able to see if we can get a breakout of the actual taxes and which pot of money it flowed through, whether it was for bond debt, which is the majority, or at least a good chunk of it as well. But I don't off the top of my head know the percentage breakout between bond debt and local revenue that went into transportation.
So school district property tax line, some goes to bond debt reimbursement, some goes to transportation and some goes to.
The bulk of it is, is certainly going to be our general fund, followed by bond debt, followed by a portion over the last couple of years that we're able to give to the transportation fund.
And that's totally fine. Is, is there a part beyond that that doesn't actually go to the school district? Like, cause we said there, we can own.
There has been in the past.
Okay.
If what the district has asked for is less than the max tax cap. And for, for instance, we thought we were going to have 50,000 kids, but we had 45,000 kids. And now Anchorage already released the tax notices in May. But now we have significantly number of students, so they can't give us all of that money. They, they simply can't give it to us because it would violate the state foundation rules for max local contribution. Then in that case, the municipality would have been able to retain that money. Yes.
Next up, member Bellamy.
Yes, thank you. So my question basically is, you know, given what we are seeing here and talking about, what, what is our collective message to the legislator? I mean, what, it, it, what can we say to them? What help can we expect? What, what is our message? And it may not be that we talk, we do it today. But at some point, it seems to me that you know, our message need to be unified and it needs to be pretty darn strong.
Through the president to member Bellamy, I, I agree. And I just wanted to share some insights at the state level. I really believe that we need to work through our delegation. If through organizations that both Jim and I belong to, and, and most likely the board as well around the state, many school districts are booming right now, those that had those statewide correspondence programs. And so you're really probably not going to see, at least we have not thus far seen, they're not going to split the hairs of school districts and, and interests. So we're really going to have to, and, and those programs are located in rural areas. They are money revenue makers in rural areas. So great idea back then, you know, 20 years ago, they continue to grow, they offer services. Large school districts in other places did not get in that business till too late, right? So we're, we're trying to catch up to compete. So it's not that it's unfair or whatever. It is what it is. But the point is that I think we need to significantly impact our delegation to understand the differences that large cities have compared to rural areas in regard to COVID-19 and the impact because of where students landed. And so as delicately as we can, can share that, we certainly want to service all students in the state. But there are some school districts running with millions of dollars in surplus because the cost of doing business and receiving the funds for those kids are, are two different things. So just to your point, I think it needs to be strategic. I think we need to think on it and agree that it has to be very succinct and precise with an ask because the 53 school districts really have experienced this differently. And I would say that the largest, we all were impacted by eight to 10% of our student body. So Juno, Fairbanks, Kenai and us, Matt Sue was a little bit less, but they too were impacted this time. Took a significant hit during COVID-19.
Yeah. Yeah. So, you know, personally, this, this changes my legislative priorities. And I'd like to invite everybody to join us on Tuesday. That, what day is it? K, K the eighth? So because we, we're looking at legislative priorities at that time as well as the resolution. So please, because this changes, just slightly changes my priorities. Thank you.
Next up is member Marseth.
Margot, I think it would be a good idea to, because I believe in collectively, if we were to get the five, four largest school districts together and put an ask out there as the five largest school districts and saying what our needs have been and how they're different from the rural Alaskan communities, that if we actually even did a press conference or a letter from the five districts with an ask that we can all agree on, I think that would have a lot of weight behind it. So what I would recommend is that possibly we do a Zoom meeting and invite several members or of the large five districts, and then they can go back to their boards with what we come up with and see if we can't come up with a collaborative ask.
Okay. Dr. Bishop, your thoughts? And, and we can talk about this in our planning session tomorrow, not to use the time now, but thanks, Star.
I, I would agree. And Jim and I, with our counterparts in the large five, big five do speak to that. But again, we belong to organizations that. do speak to that. But again, we belong to organizations that also represent all of Alaska. So you won't see those individual organizations uh globally reach out because they have to respond to everyone. Uh, but I, I would say that the big five certainly, um, specifically, uh, Juno, Kenai and Fairbanks, uh specifically those superintendents, and, and I have really worked together and Jim as well with the finance officers understand, we, we saw a significant uh out migration of students to statewide correspondence.
Okay, so I'll, I'll get with um President Fakaylis and Dr. Bishop, and we'll figure out in our planning session what our next step on that would be.
And, and um, Madam President, the, the concern would really be the support and aid because of the unpredictability. It's going to be very difficult to plan for next year without a sense of what COVID-19 has done. And so some type of stabilization funds to carry us into uh the next year until we can see a trend, I would say would be the best bet because it's not necessarily that go after the whole funding. I don't think we have enough information about the whole, I mean, we've always needed additional funds in the funding formula. But if I would bank on the support that they could give, they could give short duration funds to help with planning, to help with stabilization, so that we could stabilize our staffing, at least to see what the future holds. That, that would be, I think, something that both parties in the legislature could get behind, the stabilization of our state.
Yeah, I, and I absolutely agree. And I think uh, Member Donley also had some uh feedback relative to this. And it does have a, a different uh meaning to me. Some of his points have a different meaning to me now. So uh, again, we'll be discussing it on Tuesday. Uh, 4:30 to 6:30. So as many of you as, uh, everybody's invited. Thank you.
Thank you, Margot. Um, and I will be happy to reach out to the other um board presidents and see about putting some sort of a meeting together. I've talked with um Fairbanks recently, and I know they're on board with uh getting together and having some of these uh really important conversations in a timely manner. Uh, next up, Member Marsette.
So as we're talking about this, and I don't see any other hands raised, so I'm, I'm gonna bring this up. And again, this is how we look at this budget. And so we've looked at it now, we've, we've talked about it, we've gone through it. I know that it's gonna go back to the different departments and the district is gonna come back with us, what their recommendations are gonna be. I just encourage board members to follow the process. The process is we fund our goals and guardrails. Not that, you know, I mean, that's where our priorities are. That's what we've spoken as a board, where our priorities are. And that we don't focus on line item vetoes or saying what we should support and what we shouldn't support. That if we aren't in agreement, if we can't be in agreement of what the district being, brings forward and balancing our budget, then it's up to us to send it back um and let this, let them, you know, with um instructions on maybe what we'd like to see, but that we're not happy with what we're seeing. And is there another way that we could balance the budget? There may not be. I mean, we're looking at a huge deficit here. And there may not be, but I just, I just want to encourage the board and hopefully that we can, can stay in this process of where we need to be when we start looking at approving the budget.
Thank you. Um, are there any other board members with uh comments or questions for Dr. Bishop and the finance team, uh, Member Bellamy?
And I, I, I just wanted to, um, I don't disagree, uh, member, uh, board member, uh, Marsette. I, I just, I just think that we have to fi- find a way to do both. We've got to figure out how to fund our goals and recuperate from COVID. And I, I don't know how that's gonna happen, but, but um both of those things are important and very impactful. So um, I, and, and hence my question on what is our message to the legislature? I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
All right, um, not seeing any other hands in the queue. I know that this is a lot of information for us to take in and absorb and kind of look at where we are this year with, you know, looking at next year. This is that fuzzy time of year. And so we have finance committee coming up in two weeks. Uh, we'll have more conversations there as well. Budget is really going to be one of these, um, talk about it every meeting in some way, shape or form, you know, for the next three months. I agree with uh, Member Marsette, follow the process, but um, don't be afraid as you're digging into this to reach out to Dr. Bishop and our CFO, uh, Jim Anderson, to ask questions. You know, and to help, whether it's an understanding thing or a clarification thing. Make sure you're asking those questions, um, you know, as you get them and as you go. And we'll make sure that the answers get out, you know, to everybody. And so we've got some challenges coming up. And, you know, how we approach them, whether it is through our legislative priorities and our conversations at that level or conversations at our local level, or our conversations with each other and our community. We, we've got some challenges. So um, I don't see any other hands. Uh, it is 4:20. We do not have an executive session. So what this does mean, barring any other comments or questions or anything like that, we are free until about five minutes to six, when we all need to be back online for our regular session. I, uh, Member Bellamy, you have your hand raised?
Yes, if, if we're done with the business at hand, I, I, can I uh ask a question that's not related?
Well, I, I inconveniently skipped over new business, so this would be, you could go ahead and do that. Go ahead.
Oh, uh, in terms of the, our legislative event, um, you know, we normally, uh, we're, while we're not ready for it, but uh, normally we need to pick a date. And so Katie and I were kind of uh looking at the fact that it is going to be virtual this year. We are not stuck with having it in December. We can have it in early January. And I, I just kind of wanted to reach out and see if anybody was particularly stuck. Uh, and after our conversation today and wanting to reach out to other districts, I, I think an early January date might be better. Since it's virtual and everybody can just call in, I'm not, well, we will invite everyone to call in. I have been in touch with uh, Zach Fields and Sarah Rasmussen. They're still our contacts this year. And uh, they are pretty flexible. They're very open. And I just wanted to know if there were any discussion by, uh, wha- what's the will of the, the interest of the board?
I'm just throwing in my two cents before I call on other people. I would support a January one, give us time to get everything laid out, have the conversations we need to have. Get our collective thoughts together, as it were. And because, like you say, because it is Zoom, uh, doesn't matter where folks are. You know, in the state or anything like that. And so I would support something like that. Next up, in the queue is Member Mitchell.
Well, mine is also a new business item. So I think we should finish up what um, Member Bellamy wanted. That's okay.
Yep, absolutely. I'll come back to you. Member Hildy?
Um, I, I, I like the idea of reaching out to the board members or boards and get the time. I just want to be like first in. So, so just a little bit of like urgency on it. Um, if it has to be January, I get it, but they got like a giant plate of chaos they're gonna be dealing with, and I want our thing to be the, the front thing. So first in gets, you know, gets the more attention, gets, gets the groundwork uh when you're making other decisions. It's already getting factored in. So I would prefer December, um, but if January makes more sense, I get it. Um, but just like a little fire on it.
And I, I don't think they leave until January 16th. And I, I was looking at a possible date. If we did January, it would be January 8th. And I don't know if this stat, if the, and part of, part of the, uh, my request to do the eighth of January is I, we need, we need the expertise of the staff to help get this, get everything. And it's, their plates are so full. I, I just don't, and I, I, and plus, um, I'm, I'm collecting feedback from board members daily. And we have not had the opportunity to just sift through like we did last time. It took us three, uh, two and a half meetings last time, last year, uh, to get through everybody's wants and desires. Um, so um, I agree, the sooner the better. Um, I, I just, I think in terms of capacity though. And so I don't know what, you know, I know Alan's plate's full, Kathy Moffett, tho- those are the gurus right there. Um, so I guess I'd like to hear from them or from the superintendent on, on, on timing.
I mean, truly, I, I appreciate that. Our, our, I mean, we're just overflowish. We're, we're booked, but we're gonna fit this in because it's important, you know, for the next year. So we, we'll accommodate the board, uh, but I it, it's gonna be difficult. And, and I uh do agree, um, Member Vice President Bellamy, that you know, getting next week together with the board and then having it right away next week would be very difficult. That would be too difficult. But if we pushed it off to the last week prior to break or the first week coming back, that would be more beneficial. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Remember, next week.
And uh, Member Marsette, was your comment related to Member Bellamy's question?
Yes. Um, I, I agree on January because I really think getting with the five largest districts is very important because if we can make this a collaborative effort and not just ASD, that's gonna have a lot more weight behind it. So I, I do think that is crucial and um moving forward.
Correct.
And Member Dodley, I see you joined us on video. Did you have a comment to, to bring up? Awesome. Good to see you. Um, all right. So Member Bellamy, I think that kind of gives you a little bit of feedback um on that one. We'll look forward to the conversation next week as we kind of, you know, attempt to refine some of these things. Uh, Member Mitchell, you had your hand up for a possible new topic.
Yeah, and I, just to follow up on Member Bellamy's question, I, I really don't, I agree that I don't think that we will be ready until Jan, well, I guess it depends on if we are going to have some kind of a documented, a formatted document because I know you know, the past couple of years, we've, it's been a process to agree to our priorities and then we still noodle with the document and the wording. So it, I just don't think we have enough time to get this done before the end of December. And by, you know, people are focused on the holidays, even though this year is different. So my next question, it's, I'm not sure if it would, if it's more appropriate to bring it up here or if it's more appropriate to wait until we talk about the COVID task force during our regular board meeting, but I'm getting, um, you know, as we were looking at the November 16th date, which boy, the world looked pretty good then compared to the way it does today, but I know that one of the questions that comes up a lot is the um air quality in the schools. And I know that Mr. Roth has several times presented to us on what um the air quality does look like. Can we filter it? Is each room its own thing? Is there, I'm sure that the district, I mean, they, they've put so much time and effort into this. Is it possible to share with the board an assessment of school, building by building, what does it look like within those buildings? Um, you know, because I would think that there are some buildings where there aren't, where the, where each classroom is not individual intake and output. Um, and I know that that's the ideal. Because my understanding is that in some schools, they're buying air filters for some of the rooms and um, it would just be helpful, I think, if we could um provide that, that information. I don't know if that's, that's feasible or not.
Were you trying to get that answer during today's meeting or just?
No, 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 it would be a request. It would be an RFI. Unless, Dr. Bishop, you happen to have a list of 100 buildings and right in front of you there.
Yeah, um, we could put that on as an RFI and um, I'll get um Tom and his team's uh feedback on how long, if they already have something like that, or if it's something that they would have to collect and aggregate in. Oh, very difficult. Okay. Okay. All right, so um, we'll get back to you on how something like that might work.
We'll get, we'll have an explanation.
Yeah, Dr. Bishop and, and Tom Roth will get back to you on that one.
Thank you.
Did any other board members have any other things under new business potentially? Um, I'll go ahead and bring one thing up. I spoke with another board member earlier today that there was a question about possibly over the last, I want to say year or so, um, lost track of time, could have been longer. We've gone to one work session a month and it's kind of expanded from one hour to two hours, kind of depending on what we needed to do. And we reserved the uh second meeting of the month to have finance right before that. But there's been a request for more work session time to have more of this question and answer and the informal conversation on maybe some specific topics. It, because our, our regular meetings tend to get over expanded and, you know, stuff like that. So wondering if there are any thoughts from board members on putting in a second work session at the second meeting of the month? Possibly maybe moving finance to maybe coincide with governance and communications. I'm just looking for comments from board members on how they would feel about something like that. Uh, Member Hildy?
I, I will shockingly say I'm fine with it, given, I mean, you, you know, we, we have a lot of things that are complicated happening. And I think that the more we have time to just um get some clarity and not rehash the same things, but just kind of get to some conclusions. Okay, this is what we're gonna do. This is what we're not gonna do. This is my understanding and, and, and then be able to move forward. So I do support it. I'm not be interested in having like finance tacked on to governance. I mean, that just gets really long. I always want to, I always say people should be able to work and have a regular job. And I know Member Donley does a lot to be able to be at these meetings, but it can't be where it's too hard for, you know, that long time, like, so I, I just would not want it to be tacked on to those even more. But just being mindful of people's time.
Um, thank you for that. Uh, Member Marsette?
Yes, I agree. Um, maybe additional work session. But I would not put the finance committee tacked on to communications or governance. I think that's just too long and you'll get less people attending those committee meetings. And I hate just adding a meeting out there for, you know, once a month arbitrarily, but let me take a look at it and um I will come up with some suggestions that I can present um at the next board meeting or at the next finance committee meeting. Unless you're wanting to move it like the next meeting.
No, not necessarily. I'm throwing it out for board comments and stuff like that as we start looking at you know, planning meetings, you know, working forward, just what something might look like, maybe as we go through the, you know, second semester.
Right. And I think right now with the budget, finance committee meetings are pretty important. Because we're having a lot of discussion there. So um, yeah, I, I mean, we can certainly move it. We just need to look to see what would be accommodating for all board members. Maybe we can do, I'll have Katie do a doodle poll or something.
Okay. Next up, Member Mitchell.
Um, yeah, I just want to say that I do support this idea. I think that there are a lot of things we haven't really had a chance to get into um in depth there. Um, and this would allow us that opportunity again. So I, I've really missed having, having those, that extra time to um, if, if there's been so much going on this year that I think just for the board, I, you know, certainly not to provide more work for the administration, but just for the board to have more time to discuss things among ourselves would be really helpful. So thank you.
All right. Well, we will come back to board members with um some possible ideas or um, you know, suggestions, kind of as we move forward. But just wanted to throw that out, um, you know, under this section here. Not seeing any other hands. And I know when I say that, I like to give about 10 seconds for those people. Mr. Donley?
Thank you. Uh, I think we had an update to Zoom and it's difficult to find the raise hand option anymore on my computer. So anyhow, I had a question for the superintendent regarding the instructional um hours we're, we're providing at the current time. Can I, am I allowed to bring something up like that and just ask a question?
Sure.
Okay. Then Superintendent, um, I'm I'm still not exactly clear about the minimum instructional hours per week. That we're asking of our teachers. Um, at the beginning of the school year, we were told it was gonna be one hour on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday and Fridays. And none on Wednesdays. But then eh, as the year developed, it sounded like, at least in the upper classes. There were additional hours being adopted of instruction. And I was just wondering, what is the current status of the minimum we're expecting of our instructors? And particularly, I'm particularly interested in the the K through eight range of classrooms.
Uh, thank you for that question and I'm uh, gonna request that Mark Stock uh, be pulled up and he will share um. Presently the time, but as you know, um, and briefly during my superintendent report, I will share. Uh, what it will look like. It will change uh, next. January, uh, specifically in regard to whether we can get in school or even if we can't still, there's gonna be a significant uh, change that we've been working on. So here's uh, Dr. Stock for the update now and then we can. Kind of give a a small preview into what we're gonna share during the superintendent report.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Um, to the president, to Member Donnelly, we have a set of expectations that have been developed. And those have been built out. I don't have the numbers right in my head, but I'm gonna refer to Mr. Barker and to. Dr. Johnson, who might be able to answer from the elementary and you mentioned that K eight perspective, didn't you? But that also could include the middle school. So I'll turn to Mr. Barker if they would like to go over the. Now, this is like Dr. Bis- Bishop mentioned, this is our current status, what people are working under now. And I think it would also be important before Dan speaks to mention that. In in an online environment, these remote instructional that. A lot of instructional pieces aren't counted in the Zoom times. And so live synchronous direct instruction through Zoom is one piece of it. But there are other types of uh, instructional activities that that go, that are not actually live zooming and we call that asynchronous. So teachers use both and so, but I think you're mostly referring to the actual live teaching moments. Where the teachers are in front of the students through Zoom and so I'll turn to Mr. Barker.
Uh, excuse me, uh, thank you, Dr. Stock. So uh, at two uh. To Member Don or Lee through the chair, um, uh, as Dr. Stock outlined, our expectations uh, move both through synchronous and asynchronous instructional components. So uh, that it looks a little different uh, between whether or not you're discussing a face-to-face Zoom interaction. Which to some folks is is what they're seeing only as instruction or the entire instructional burden. So the face-to-face expectations for uh, elementary uh, around the the, what we're calling face-to-face. So the Zoom piece is a a minimum of one lesson in Zoom for English Language Arts every day, five days a week. And a minimum of one lesson in mathematics, five days a week. Those lessons have to be at least thirty minutes of face-to-face time. In many cases, they are more than that and involve additional follow-up. So that's the face-to-face Zoom instructional time, but then in addition to that, there's a significant amount of work that has to be posted into their asynchronous shell. And there's time allowed in that instructional day for them to then schedule individual small group meeting as well as to. Uh, review that work, post the work in electronic fo- format, bring it back down, uh, make adjustments for it based on student needs. So the face-to-face instructional Zoom time is a minimum of an hour uh, a day. Uh, for thirty minutes, at least for each of those two main content areas. There uh, over the course of a five-day week, then there are going to be at least three to four times. When additional face-to-face Zoom uh, meetings happen and those could cover uh, any of the rest of the instructional areas. I'm not sure if that gets close, but I'm happy to take follow-up questions if you have.
Yeah, huh, so that's different than where we started the year. We started the year with Wednesdays being non. Instructional days, so we have evolved so that now Wednesdays also have one hour?
No, no, thank uh, through the chair uh, to Member Donnelly, my apologies. Uh, this speaks exactly to what Dr. Stock was talking about in that we're in transition right now. I just came out of a meeting with all my elementary principals where we're discussing what happens on that asynchronous day. As it stands right now in elementary, that does exist. There is that asynchronous day. I would tell you a large number of our elementary instructors though are using that time for smaller group or individual meetings. So there is instruction taking place on that day, but it's not required at my level on Wednesdays as it stands right now.
And what about for? Seventh and eighth graders?
Uh, that would be Dr. Johnson.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, Member Donnelly, um, our expectations for seventh and eighth grade and then sixth grade, if there is a sixth grade associated with the middle school. Is that they're scheduled for their three courses um, in their quarterly schedule right now. And for each course, there's a minimum thirty-minute lesson required four days a week with Wednesdays being asynchronous. Um, and an expectation of some sort of online assignment given. Um, and in addition to that, um, teachers are able to teach for up to ninety minutes per um, course a a day. Um, so some of them may choose to teach longer and and often what we're seeing, um, now that teachers are getting into a rhythm with kids. Is that they often will teach for the first thirty to sixty minutes of the the period. And then they'll use that that remainder thirty minutes in the ninety-minute block to do some one-on-one support with kids. Um, who are struggling or need help on assignments and so. Um, so most teachers are using way more than that thirty-minute um, required timeframe on as a part of their coursework um, in their teaching requirement.
So that's one half, one and one half hour each day minimum for four days a week. So that's a total of six hours a week of minimum actual instruction. Does. Does that thirty minutes? Does it include like taking attendance or um, doing? Playing a video or recording or is it actually true instructional time?
Well, attendance is certainly one of the requirements that we have them um, participate in as a teacher, the first ten minutes of the period. Um, our policy for teachers is to, the kids have to have their cameras on um, so that we can verify it's them. Um, and teachers do need to take attendance within that first ten minutes. Um, typically that that takes less than a minute or two. Um, so um, we're we're definitely including that as a part of their time because we we do need to keep our attendance records accurate, so.
Okay, so that isn't all just pure instruction. There's other things that could be happening?
There could be, yes.
Thank you for that clarification. Um, Dr. Bishop, um, if I could have a follow-up question? President?
Um, I don't see any hands in the queue, so go ahead. Oh, I saw Alicia's hand up in the queue. Let me um, go to her real quick.
Member Donnelly's is directly tied to his. Mine's a little bit tied to his, but if you, I don't care if he finishes what he says.
All right, Member Donnelly, go ahead and then I'll come back to uh, Member Hildy.
Dr. Bishop, I just remain very concerned about the total amount of instruction time that we're delivering to our kids. I think it's slightly better for seven and eight than than what we were originally anticipating beginning of the year. So we're getting an hour and a half. Instead of an hour. But. Six hours a a week still really concerns me that that's the minimum that we're we're providing. I just think we should be more ambitious than that and expect more from from our teachers uh, for actual direct content. Um, my personal experience, what I'm hearing for parents is some of these blocks of time are made up just. Playing videos um, and others outside sources rather than actual true instruction. And and that is very concerning that our kids just aren't getting. Instructional time. I remember it was, it was only a less than two years ago when this board. One of the reasons this board rejected the uh, proposal to play the National Anthem once a month. Was that we just couldn't afford the loss of instructional time and that was four minutes a month. And now we're down to four hours and six hours of minimum instructional time a week. It just is very concerning and I just don't think it's enough for our kids.
Thank you, Member Donnelly. I'm, I I agree with you. And uh, we we had spent time to adjusting and providing staff professional development time. Uh, as well as preparing for in-school instruction and that has not occurred uh, over time, uh, even when numbers were much lower. You know, fractions of what they are now. Uh, we've had the same difficulty in August as as I see that we're having now in regard to getting back into school. And the things that have changed are the case counts and they're just tremendously high. Hence, we have worked with the School Start Task Force, uh, our uh, union leadership in those areas. To have a different plan for second semester uh, that really um, utilizes especially the elementary. Divisions, uh, innovative programs that they've started. I'm gonna update, uh, you know, there's twenty-six schools with kids going in them. And fifty-two schools, including some secondary, are going to have students in tutoring and other assistance. For programming for face-to-face instruction. So I want to say that our staff and our teachers are volunteering now in twenty-six schools to go in and teach. And it'll be upwards of fifty-two schools. Um, there are many educators who. Desire the and want to do that face-to-face in a safe environment and they're working with their principals. Principals are really leading the charge um, in creating those safe spaces and creating those environments that are welcoming. They're hearing from their parents and their students and they're hearing from their educators who want to get in there. Uh, second semester, if we don't have a full-scale uh, roll-in, stepped roll-in. Uh, we will have, uh, and Mark, again, will talk in more detail. Uh, what it's looking like is Zoom sessions in the morning and face-to-face in the afternoon provided uh, five days a week. Uh, to our entire community and really focusing on equity. Uh, I will share with you and I think some data represented that, that the more. We move into the year, uh, the the the. The further away are the margins uh, of our underserved populations. And uh, especially secondary uh, spoke significantly on this in regard to the failing grades. And and they've come to understand that um, summer school is not going to be enough uh, to 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 make up that loss. And so uh, part of their program is really servicing students, uh, kind of double-dipping them, though we call it. They're gonna continue their education and then also on top of that, uh, catch up on those areas that they've fallen behind. You know, I I I want to say it isn't a lack of trying and it's not a lack of professionalism. It's not. Um, we're we're doing it, um, and but we're doing it on a volunteer basis. And I so appreciate the leadership, uh, both in the secondary and elementary divisions as well as the leadership at the school levels. To make something like this happen with their staff. I thank those teachers and those staff doing, doing so.
Thank you. Um, and I, um, in, uh, Member Donnelly, I know that I, if I'm correct, we're probably gonna circle back around to some of this during our regular meeting. Um, as well with probably a little bit. More information, except you dipped your toe in, but I think I know where it's it's gonna go during the regular meeting. Um, want to give Member Hildy a chance to speak.
Oh, I just had a little caveat to that. I, so I, you know, hear what Member Don's saying, don't disagree with anything, but just like Zoom, more Zoom isn't the answer. It was just, that was just the point I wanted, because we've done that and it, like, I had to cut it in fifty percent and it was like a kid on the screen for five and a half hours and. But, you know, so I'm glad to hear that, you know, really innovative solutions, um, but true things, you know, every, everything, everybody's saying are true things. And and looking towards solutions. I'm just really thankful for that.
And next up in the queue, Member Mitchell?
And you know what? Member Hildy just took the words out of my mouth, so thank you. I just, um, I agree that more Zoom is not the answer. And I'm really excited to hear about what some of the plans are for for uh. Next semester.
And so that got the hands out of the queue. Member Donnelly, did you have one more comment or question or do you want to wait for regular session?
Well, my last question was, what's holding us back from increasing the minimum? I I I'm very grateful those, for those teachers who are volunteering to do more than the minimum. Very grateful for our our leadership that's uh, encouraging instructors to do that. But as a policy-setting body, what's holding us back from setting a higher minimum of actual hours of instruction?
Dr. Bishop, would you like me to tackle that one?
Please do so.
Okay, uh, through the president to Member Donnelly, there's, I think we have to also remember where we've come from. And I don't think people realize what a lift it was for our faculties to go from. From March until and 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 show up in the fall and be in total remote instruction. And what we have to remember is the amount of skills and and planning and training and time it's taken our teachers to get to this point. We are getting more efficient with it. Teachers have found many innovative ways to do things, but I agree with the other members who mentioned that more Zoom is not the answer. Other innovative things, uh, there are other instructional strategies that teachers are trying to deploy through technology. And hopefully, we get through our Christmas break and we can begin the process of starting to transition to getting. Kids back into schools where we we need them to be. And I I I agree with your concerns. Um, and those maybe if there are individual concerns regarding a teacher's use of their time and the minimums, then. Please contact individual principals and parents can work through that and we'll work through that. Our principals are doing their observations and evaluations and attending Zoom sessions and trying to. To do that, I I will tell you, it is, it is very difficult for the principals. They can't walk down the halls like the old days and be able to pop in every room and feel like they really knew everything that was going on inside their school. It's a lot harder in the digital world for us to track that. So I just want some grace for some of our staff who've had to learn so many new skills in a short period of time. And hopefully we'll get our kids back in school here at the beginning of the third quarter at some point here. After we get back to do the breaks and we'll see, see if we can't start tackling some of that, but. And if we're not, if not, if we need to revisit those minimums, is if we end up getting stuck in remote instruction for longer and longer. Then uh, then it's time to revisit some of that and see if we can be more efficient.
Member Marset, you have your hand raised.
Yeah, just a quick comment. Um, Mr. Donnelly, appreciate your comments, but when you ask what's stopping us from um, extending the online time. Personally, I think it's our students. Um, I know having a middle school grandson, um, he's having, he's struggling. He's having a tough time with this online uh, virtual learning and more instruction time is not gonna help him. Um, so I too am looking forward to what uh, some of the other uh, maybe innovative things that we can look at to reach our children. Uh, just having teachers present more online. Doesn't necessarily meet the needs of our students. So I I am looking forward to to hear what they have to say, but thank you for your comments.
All right, I don't see any other hands in the queue. Um, I do appreciate this conversation and I think it's probably a good kickoff to our regular session here in an hour. You know, this is all really important and it's just good to hear where board members' minds are at and thoughts and questions and stuff like that. So definitely looking forward to getting some more information. Because that's what we're here for, talking about our kids and how we're gonna do the very best for them moving forward. It is four fifty. Gonna go ahead and let people go for an hour. Um, we have a regular session that starts at six. I would ask board members to be on a little bit early. Uh, Member Donnelly, I have IT that's willing to stay on a little bit later with you on this uh, session if you would like some IT help. But barring any other questions or comments, I will go ahead and adjourn this work session and we'll see everybody in about an hour. Thank you to everybody who's attended and the community as well.
Thank you.